Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Pastor Nathan Brandon here to give our invocation this evening. Thank you, Mr. Brandon.
Please pray with me. Father, we've gathered here this evening in the knowledge of your abundant blessings to us. We enjoy the fruit of the labors of generations before us, and we give you thanks for their faithfulness in their endeavors. Today, we face challenges unlike any in our previous history. We are part of a global family, and we realize issues that are, up to now, have had little to do with us, but they now affect our daily lives. Our city is experiencing growth and prosperity that is both exciting as well as challenging. May we be good stewards and resource of the resources during this time. Tonight, as this council and staff consider the business of our city, I pray that you would grant them wisdom in their decisions, for your word says that if anyone lacks wisdom, they should ask you. And may those who come after us also find evidence of your blessings and favor. For these things, we pray in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Nathan. Appreciate your prayer. I'd like to call to order our May 2nd, 2024 council meeting. Begin with a consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Tonight, we have one presentation to make, and it's a presentation, a proclamation for Building Safety Month. And on request of Mr. Eric Fortner, our Building and Safety Services Director, I would like to share some information about this occurrence. Building Safety Month is an international celebration that takes place in May to raise awareness about building safety. Its goal is to help educate individuals, families, and businesses on what it takes to create safe and sustainable structures, reinforce the need for the adoption of modern, regularly updated building codes, and highlight the well-trained professionals who work year round to ensure our safety. The 2024 campaign theme is Mission Possible and includes the specific weekly, the special weekly themes. Week one, Understanding the Mission, includes an introduction of building safety, what Building Safety Month is, and how building safety affects us all. Week two, Preparing a Building Safety Plan, highlights available educational resources, water, fire, sustainability, and resiliency disaster preparedness, includes downloadable brochures for safety, building safety tips, and best practices at home and in your community. Week three, Learning from the Pros shines the spotlight on building safety professionals, including what they do, how to work with them, and how to become one yourself. Week four, Engaging Your Community includes information on how to advocate for building safety in your community, including actionable tips on how to be a proponent of building safety and ways to get kids involved. And week five, since it's May, we have a bonus week, and that's celebrating success in building safety, highlighting individuals and communities who are making a difference in building safety, editorial spotlights, including sharing the current year's Building Safety Month celebrations and events. So I'd like to share this proclamation for Building Safety Month. Whereas our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike, and whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year round to ensure the safe constructions of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment, to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildlined fires, floods, and earthquakes, and whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protector of public safety, our local code officials, who assures us, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Mission Possible is the theme for the Building Safety Month 2024, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world who are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, I, Bill Grant, Mayor of the City of Canton, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. And we would like to thank our building professionals in the Building Safety Department and for all their efforts and their hard work, and I'd like to ask Mr. Eric Fortner to join me down front to accept this proclamation. You have in your packet the council meeting draft minutes from April 18th. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Everyone voted for the motion. We have a couple of information items this evening. These are for information only. Item A, Review of March Financials. We have our Finance Director, Melissa Forster, here. Thank you, Ms. Forster.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I wanted to address the audit that was presented to you at the last meeting. And the auditor, Clay Pilgrim, gave you a bunch of numbers and spreadsheets and a presentation. But I would like to ask that when you review the audit, maybe this weekend, that you'll look at the notes section either in your booklet or online, because the notes section really details how the city operates and our policies and procedures and how we behave with our pensions and our debt service, where a lot of our revenues come from, our capital assets. And my personal favorite is the statistical section at the very end. So if you had the booklet, you would just flip to the back pages and read the audit in reverse. And that way, you'll find out how many water connections we make in a year, who our largest water consumers are, who our highest taxpayers are. You can compare our debt with the county and look at that at a taxpayer level, and look at our assessments over the years. A lot of the information is presented in either a five-year or 10-year comparable. So it's really valuable, and I hope that you'll check it out if you have curiosity about how the city runs and answering questions to the public. I also wanted to just briefly highlight a few issues with the March financials. So that's halfway through our fiscal year, and everything's in order, everything looks good. If you go to the general fund, which is on page two of 14, I just wanted to touch on a few things here. The revenues, if you notice, the percentage use column on the right side of the page, the general fund has collected nearly 89% of revenues for the year, and that's standard. So you'll see that we get our money in generally pretty early in the year, and then the second half of the year is when we really start to spend it, a lot of times on projects that we've been waiting to get going. Of course, salaries are pretty consistent throughout the year. So if you looked at page three of 14, that shows you where we are with our expenditures, kind of in the middle of the page to the right. Expenditures for the general fund are at 46%. And down at the bottom, you'll see that we're ahead right now. Our net change in fund balance is over 12 million. You'll notice that number will start to decline as expenditures eat into our revenues. So that's one thing to consider and to explain to taxpayers if they're like thinking that we're way ahead halfway through the year. That'll start to dwindle as we continue. The rest of the funds are pretty, pretty good, at 50% revenues, 50% expenditures, except for where some revenues are coming in more than anticipated, like the hotel motel tax and this Spleust Fund. And I did want to just touch on a few major issues that have recently happened. We have cut the payment to the county Board of Commissioners for our fire tax. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That'll be paid this week in the amount of $6,534,000. And I wanted to bring that up as we start going into the budget year. So when people are thinking about the millage rate, you can keep in mind that that payment that we're making to the county this week is 70%, almost 71% of all the taxes that we receive on real estate. So last, at the last meeting, the auditors mentioned that we spend over 50% of our budget, general fund budget, on public safety. Just know that almost 71% of real estate taxes go to pay the county for fire services. So as we move ahead in the budget year, just keep that in mind. And everything else is pretty much in order. I'll be glad to answer any questions on the audit, or the financials, or the budget, if there's something we want to talk about moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Forster. I always appreciate your update and insights. Any questions for Mr. For, Ms. Forster, tonight? Always, and we know where to find you. So thank you so much. Appreciate the information. The next item, this is for your information only, no discussion, and is in accordance with our new process, basically to put this master plan amendment on your radar for an upcoming meetings. And this is for MPA 2404, Act 001, Master Plan Amendment Request to Add Residential as an Allowed Use in Riverstone Pod B, and variance request to reduce required buffer. Mr. Green, I believe this is the brief technical report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you stated, this is our first residential submittal since the end of the abeyance. And as you stated, the applicant is looking to adjust the allowed uses in Pod B of the Riverstone Development to allow residential. The site plan that he submitted shows four buildings, two living units piece, for a total of eight new dwelling units there. Also, he has filed a concurrent variance to reduce the required 50-foot buffer to a 10-foot buffer and building setback line. This item will be placed on the next council agenda for a little further discussion. The public hearing will be held in June, I believe it's June the 6th, and possible action on June the 20th, if the council meets. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have, or this is the one, this is the first one since the abeyance, and I know that I got at least two yesterday.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. This, again, for information only, but if you have any questions on that, please forward them to Mr. Green. Announcements, I have one very important announcement, and that we want to wish a very happy birthday to Councilor, Councilman Tolan. Happy birthday. And it's an important date, and we wish you the best. So, any other announcements?
It's tough when you get to four years old.
It is, it is. Oh, any other announcements? Okay, if not, we'll move on to our 10-minute public input. We have two residents sign up to speak. When I call your name, please step forward to the podium and, and give us your name and address, and share your comments with us. Dee Gale?
Hi, good evening. 818 Honey Springs Drive, Woodstock. First of all, thank you for letting me speak tonight to all of you. I'm here representing the seniors in the community that we serve at Senior Services. I'm the Resource Coordinator at Cherokee County Senior Services and Stand Up for Seniors. We've always received calls into Senior Services for help with rent assistance, mortgage assistance, as well as utilities, home repairs, amongst other things. As everyone here knows, the housing market and rental rates are considerably higher than the average resident can afford. Even our groceries are higher, which contribute to the burden for seniors. What we have seen, what we have seen in increase in the last few years is the need for more rent assistance or attainable housing that is affordable. Just in rental and motel assistance this year, we have helped 42 seniors, 25 of those we have put up in motels. The most we can put them in for is 28 days, and this just creates a Band-Aid, because there is nowhere for them to go based on their income level. The monthly income levels of the seniors we are serving for motel and rent assistance range from 700 to 1,700 a month. Colbert Square, which is a HUD senior housing property, they have 45 on their waitlist, and that list has been closed since November. HUD asked them to close it due to no movement on the list in over a year. Canton Housing Authority is a HUD property. Their waitlist was purged in January due to HUD requirements, and I know back then they had over 80 seniors on their waitlist. Currently, they have 29 seniors waiting for one bedroom and 22 seniors waiting for two What I find when I mention Colbert Square or Canton Housing Authority, most people don't even know they exist or when they are, where they are located. So when someone has a concern regarding crime or anything else, I ask you, if you don't know where low-income seniors are currently living, then you know there aren't issues with where they reside. So why would we not serve the seniors in Canton by providing them with some options to live in a home instead of their cars or on the street? Mayor, I commend you and the City of Canton for being a city who is thinking of all their residents and housing, but specifically a vulnerable population as seniors. With the current waitlist for Colbert Square and Canton Housing Authority for seniors, they will fill up the proposed development by TBG. We all deserve a place to call home, especially our older adult population that reside in Canton. My door at my office is always open to anyone who wants to discuss seniors. Sorry, I'll get emotional. And with that, the struggles in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gale. Next, we have Mr. Thomas Weaver.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at 131 Old Marietta here in Georgia, and heartbreaking indeed to hear what she had to share with all of us. It seems that the growth pains of continuing to help shape and mold Canton to be the cool small town in America continue to tell you, hound you, and reminded of it constantly each and every council session here. You heard your Finance Director share that the fire tax base that the county assesses for their fire taxes continuing to grow. Also, the senior population that was alluded to just now by the other speakers continuing to grow, which means more homesteads will find themselves into that exemption base that will cause other property owners to have to shoulder that fire tax burden. Your roads are stretched, are stressed out beyond capacity, and I believe that, I even had the distinct privilege of speaking with Mr. Dwayne Fowler next door at the Cherokee County Water and Sewerage Authority regarding the capacity issue, and their board has made their decision there also. I have it on good authority, as I was told. With all of the issues that are vexing you, I would caution you to please consider continuing to be conservatively strong, good stewards of every penny that the taxpayers send your way. I know that that's one of the major pillars that you've built in your roadmap, and I know that you're going to continue to do that. However, an approbation of those comments, not to invite any misgivings upon the mayor or council or our friends across the street at History Cherokee, but the memorandum of understanding that's currently slated for your consideration tonight is one such arena where I would wager to consider whether or not that would be a good public policy position that council would be inclined to or not inclined to consider at this time. I have it on good authority in review of previous budget allocations that the city has already graciously provided $75,000 per year for the past two or three years to the Historical Society, and now they're in danger of defaulting on the loan. This isn't anything against them personally, it's just, we continue to have the lowest millage rate in Cherokee County, which is an accolade to all that Team Canton does here, at 5.4 mils. That's wonderful. You continue to have good fiduciary, strong conservative policy when it comes to the wallet and the purse. That's good, and speaks highly of Team Canton also. They've done more with less and tightened their belt for years. I would just ask council if that's an expenditure that might be able to be shaved, and approbation of all of the other issues that council's soon going to have to address. Sometimes, and I don't envy your position, but sometimes it's okay to say no. I dare not wager if that was a particular instance or not where council would be inclined to do so, but not everything that glitters is gold. It's nothing, it's nothing, it's no kind of animus or animosity to our friends across the street. We benefit from that resource. I believe there are things that you would expect to find here in downtown Canton as the county seat that you wouldn't look for in, say, Mountain Park beside Lake Cheerful on the Cherokee side, perhaps. But that is the taxpayers' money, and there's a big difference between that and sharing it with a neighboring governmental unit to provide housing versus something where it's been mismanaged. You would imagine that mismanagement of funds is something Washington DC does and rewards those who do it with more. Do we want to emulate their success here? I dare not say, but it's something for, for each of you to consider. With all of the other issues that you're going to be faced with between your water and your roads, how are you going to provide for all the people that are moving here? Is that really also something that's sordid and needed, perhaps? Maybe not, but that's for you to decide.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. We have three items on tonight's consent agenda. These items have been discussed at previous meetings. There appears to be consensus on those. As usual, I'll read each of those, and if anyone would like any of those items removed from the consent agenda for further discussion later in the meeting, I'd be happy to do so. Item A, Approval of Local Amendment to Plumbing Code for Water Efficiency. Item B, Approval of Title VI Annual Update. And item C, Approval of Task Order 5 with Practical Design Partners for West Main Street Pedestrian Corridor Right-Away Acquisition Services and Drainage Redesign in the amount of $96,575. Would anyone like any of those items removed for further discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We have two items of old business to discuss tonight. Both are listed for possible action. Item A, Discussion and Possible Action for History Cherokee to deferral annual installment on the note between the city and History Cherokee to purchase the East Marietta Street property. Ms. Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. During the month of, in the month, at the council meeting in April, we presented you a memorandum of understanding where we, where Cherokee, History Cherokee has asked that the council consider deferring $25,000 on their annual installment payment. You requested that we reach out to History Cherokee and make sure that within that memorandum of understanding, we identify the deferral of $25,000 and clearly indicate that it will not cause this installment note to be in default. You wanted us to identify the use of those funds and how it will directly impact the citizens of the City of Canton, and to clearly state that this will be a one-time deferral of that installment note. You have in front of you a copy of the memorandum of understanding that contains those items that council requested. That was created in cooperation with History Cherokee, and tonight, we ask for your consideration to approve that one-time deferral of $25,000.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. And we certainly appreciate the work you've done to follow up on this and to generate the memo of understanding with History Cherokee. We appreciate their, their work and commitment to continue to partner with the city. Personally, I believe there, there are several things that are offered as, as services to the city in lieu of deferment of this, this one-time annual payment. I think the most important, to me, and the most valuable of that is, is, is having the History Center operate as an official visitor center and have their facilities and restrooms open for, for the public, especially during, for specified hours and during city events. I know this is something we've discussed many times. I know before Historical Society moved out of the old Marble Courthouse, they functioned as official visitor center for the city, and it was a valuable service. I believe that, that alone provides great service to us, because we have been looking for, you know, downtown restrooms, especially during events. And with people coming into the city, I think it's a valuable service that they can provide in addition to the other great work that they do there. So I feel like it's a good, good understanding and a good partnership, and I just want to thank everyone for having the patience and diligence to work out those, those arrangements. Are there any questions or discussion? Ms. Peppers?
Could I make one point?
Certainly.
Mr. Mayor, the funds that are used for this are hotel motel tax funds. They can only be used for tourism-related things. What we have historically done is in that allocation of $75,000, we've required that they make a payment back to the city of $25,000, not increasing what we give to them. We're just removing that restriction for this year and keeping that loan intact in the amount that it is, but deferring it an extra year. Traditionally, those funds are remitted to the Downtown Development Authority. Downtown Development Authority was provided with funding earlier this year by the city council, so it's not a, it's not an issue for them as it relates to transferring that out of here.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Peppers. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Yon?
If not, if there are no other questions, I would make a motion that we approve History Cherokee's request to defer their annual installment for one year according to the memo of understanding.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. All members voted for the motion. Item B, discussion and possible action to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Canton Housing Authority in regard to the requested loan for the TBG residential project and their low-income housing tax credit application. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, and the city council has been made aware of this memorandum of understanding. It's been discussed previously at the city council meetings and everything. Canton Housing Authority did have a board meeting last week. The Housing Authority has approved and executed their portion of the memorandum of understanding in regards to this potential loan. City manager provided some additional information earlier this week. The city attorney, Housing Authority attorney, both worked on the language of the memorandum of understanding. I'm here to answer any questions any of you might have if I can't answer it. TBG residential staff person is here. Of course, the city manager and city attorney is here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. And we did receive the excellent memo from Mr. Peppers about this project and just the history, the, the funding. There have been some, I think, misinformation out there for various reasons about the project. I think we all agreed and appreciated his memo, and I think that information would be very appropriate for the public to have access to as well, so they're as informed as we are. So at this time, I'd actually like to ask the city manager if he would read his memo into the public record at this time.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Memo was dated April thirtieth, and I will make sure a copy of it is attached to the minutes. Honorable Mayor and Council, I was asked to prepare a memorandum providing some additional information and background on the item found under Old Business. Item B, discussion and possible action in regard to the requested loan residential project and their low-income housing tax credit application on the upcoming May second, twenty-twenty-four city council meeting agenda. You will find at the end of this memorandum a list of attached documents related to this item, including the Thomas P. Miller Housing Needs Assessment and Market Study referenced in the initial entitlement of the property, case history of the entitlement of the property at Riverstone Pod I, and the public discussion of this TBG request since March of this year. Each item includes a link to the document found on the city's website and the corresponding minutes. I do this for two reasons. First, to assure you and the public that age-restricted multifamily development in this area of Riverstone has been discussed in a variety of city council meetings dating back to twenty-twenty. And secondly, to provide historical context for you and the public about the discussions, requests, and layout of the proposed projects on the site, the site. TBG is proposing to construct ninety-six age-and-income restricted multifamily units on thirty-two acres identified as a portion of Riverstone Pod I. This site is bounded by the new replacement Cherokee High School currently under construction to the west, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard to the south, Bluffs Parkway to the east, and the cottages at Riverstone, a three-hundred-unit townhome-style rental residential project that was entitled by the city on November nineteenth, twenty-twenty to the north. The site was initially entitled for multifamily under a master plan amendment and conditional permit request filed in October twenty-twenty-one. Staff provided a case overview and staff synopsis on November eighteenth. A public hearing occurred on December second, twenty-twenty-one with one speaker opposed to the density. The case was tabled for action on December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one. On January twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, the request of master plan amendment and conditional use permit was approved and included a cap of density to eight units to the acre. The initial developer was Dominion. They proposed two-hundred-and-fifty-one units restricted to the, restricted to residents of age fifty-five plus, with all units meeting sixty percent of the area median income. This place rents for the one-bedroom units at nine-hundred-and-seventy dollars, two-bedroom units at eleven-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars, and three-bedroom units at thirteen-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. On thirty-two acres, the density equated to seven-point-eight units per acre. Dominion notified the city of its intent to seek low-income housing tax credits from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. This is an annual tax credit competition by which the state of Georgia allocates tax credits to assist developers with the creation of affordable housing stock within Georgia. Dominion was unsuccessful in its original application and then saw a funding subsidy from the city of five million dollars to assist in the development of the project. The city declined to participate. Dominion walked away from the purchase of the entitled property. The current request, TBG approached city staff in late twenty-twenty-three to inquire about this property and the concurrent entitlements. In late February twenty-twenty-four, TBG formally requested that staff inquire with the city council about a desire to see affordable senior housing on the site and request for public participation in financing the project of up to a half million dollars in a loan from the city. TBG plans to apply for low-income housing tax credit funding in the competitive cycle with Georgia Department of Community Affairs with this round of applications due on May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. TPG's proposed project is to build ninety-six units over two phases that would be age-restricted to fifty-five on the thirty-two acres. This equates to a density of three units to the acre. The proposed rent structure provides units at an equal division of fifty percent, sixty percent, and eighty percent area median income. TBG only plans to construct one-bedroom and two-bedroom units that have respective rents across the AMI spectrum of eight-seventy-five to fourteen-fifty and ten-fifty-three to seventeen-forty-three respectively. If awarded low-income housing tax credits, these rates would be locked in for a period of fifteen years. This is a similar structure used to facilitate housing in the former Canton Textile Mill Number Two, also known as the Canton Mill Lofts, which was developed in the early two-thousands. Staff has recommended that should council wish to participate in this project, the city utilize American Rescue Plan Act funds. These funds were awarded to the city in twenty-twenty-one and can specifically be used for affordable housing. These funds must be committed by December twenty-twenty-four or risk being returned to the federal government. Staff recommends that should the council wish to participate, the funds be transmitted as a loan to the Canton Housing Authority through a memorandum of understanding. The authority would then develop a financial agreement for the distribution and repayment of the loan with TBG upon a successful award of low-income housing tax credit funding from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. As loan payments are made to CHA, Canton Housing Authority, they will be remitted directly back to the city. Some key considerations. The current entitlement allows for eight units per acre or two-hundred-and-fifty-six total residential units. The proposed project requests three units per acre or ninety-six total residential units. The Thomas P. Miller Housing Needs Assessment and Market Study of twenty-twenty, which was updated again in twenty-twenty-two post-census, noted a serious lack of affordable senior housing. See page forty-three. The city's participation in the development of senior affordable housing would be a half billion dollars of ARPA funds that were specifically granted to the city post-COVID by the federal government for uses such as affordable housing. The city would not be making a direct loan to a private developer, but would be providing funding assistance to the Canton Housing Authority to facilitate the development of a needed type of housing stock and to allow the authority, which was created for the development of such housing, to dictate the manner by which funds could be made available to the developer. The city would be following a precedent set by the Cherokee County Board of Commissioners in providing ARPA funding assistance to the Canton Housing Authority. Cherokee County approved over a half million dollars in ARPA funds to the authority to demolish the former North Canton Tippins Elementary School site for a possible affordable housing project. The financing will only be awarded if the development receives low-income housing tax credit commitment from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs later this year. Timeline. The city attorney drafted a memorandum of understanding for the Canton Housing Authority and the city of Canton, and the city of Canton, should both parties wish to work on this project. The authority approved the MOU last Thursday at its meeting. If the council, city council reciprocates the approval on May second, the authority can then negotiate a financial commitment letter to attach the MOU for TBG to submit by the low-income housing tax credit deadline later this month. Please let me know if you have any further questions or would like additional information about this property, this request, or this MOU.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. And as mentioned, Mr. Pepper's memo will be attached to the minutes for this meeting. Again, it's great information. I think it's a great format. Mr. Peppers, I've discussed possibly using that same format for sharing information on future development projects, just so everyone has the same facts and information. So, and I know it was a lot to comprehend there, so I just wanted to, to touch base on a few other aspects of this project. Of course, this is a project council discussed at other meetings. We discussed it at our retreat, and we're supporting of this direction to address this need for senior housing, affordable senior housing in, in the city. At our last meeting, we unanimously approved the letter of support for the project. Again, as Mr. Peppers mentioned, the property is currently entitled for senior housing almost three times the density of the proposed TBG project for phase one. Again, it's not the first time this approach has been taken. It was taken with the Canton Mill Lofts when they were first converted into housing. I guess the difference with this project is that we have the ARPA funds that are earmarked for affordable housing and need to be spent on the tangible needs of our residents in our city. And as Gail shared, it, it also breaks my heart to know that we have seniors in our city that are living in, in hotels, the ones that even get placed in the hotels there. But, you know, our roadmap and our housing study clearly support this project. Mr. Peppers alluded to that. The original housing study was actually started during the administration, my predecessor, because we, we did, we're making decisions and we wanted accurate information on housing in the area. Mr. Peppers mentioned that report. He mentioned page forty-three, but on page forty, that report, it says there are two major areas of need, more people living downtown that patronize local businesses and housing for low-income people. Seniors and mixed-income families are looking for housing, but the cost of living has increased the seniors for seniors and residents with lower income. Canton lacks affordable senior housing to make that possible. Many apartments are in the area, but none of them are affordable for seniors. And then on page forty-three, under the list of key takeaways, the number two key takeaway was a serious lack of affordable senior housing. And later on in that list is education needs to happen on the benefits of affordable housing, unfounded and based on biases on the illogical stigma associated with low-income housing. Again, we discussed this, that it is an education communication problem, issue, and that's why I asked Mr. Peppers to read his memo, because the best way to address this misinformation is with accurate information. Again, the funds are going to the Canton Housing Authority to do what they do best, and while we task them with, and the loans proceeds will support future housing needs in the city. I mean, due to how HUD works and, and the state, you know, this small loan may possibly be a point that gets the project approved and addresses some of these senior needs in our housing. So we don't control the way those projects are scored, but this could possibly help get the project over the edge and state as other cities and communities are really competing vigorously for, for these funds and approvals of these projects. And again, also, the city has no control over the rates that are set based on income or the AMI, nor do we control how tax credit projects are scored by the state. What we do control is how our ARPA funds are spent and allocated. We do have ARPA funds that remain in our budget that have to be spent this year, so the loan would come from the ARPA funds. And again, I just double-checked with Jackie Lowberg, our executive director of Canton Housing Authority, again today, to get the current updates just from that organization. There are currently a hundred and ninety-eight applicants on the waiting list for, for, for their units. One bedroom, there are a hundred and five people, and twenty-nine of them are senior citizens. And they're, for the two-bedroom, there are ninety-two applicants, and twenty-two of those are senior citizens in our city who need an affordable place to live. So again, thanks for bearing with me, but I just think that information is important to share in the public format. And I'll turn over to council, or any additional questions or comments for Mr. Patton or Mr. Peppers? Yep, Mr. Roach?
I think obviously we're in huge support of this project going forward. Their product is phenomenal. A lot of people that I know personally know the group and have seen their developments, and I think it'll be welcomed here. I think it'll be a success. That being said, a small loan like this of five hundred thousand dollars to a developer, you know, to me and my constituents, I just don't think I can support it. I think we could use those ARPA funds. And again, the memo that you rewrote was, I hope people read it because they can more understand exactly where these, these monies need to go. I feel like we can utilize the five hundred thousand for immediate needs this year, not for something that will be developed and will take, you know, several years to, to be developed. That being said, when this project gets underway, I, I would like to see, you know, city, the, the council, the staff, and everybody work hard with this group to make sure everything flows, their permits are done, everything gets done and approved in a timely manner to hopefully help save interest payments on other loans and so forth. Again, the, the need for senior housing is, is a, is a huge thing. I support it a hundred percent. I just don't support loaning, you know. I don't want to be, and I know it's going to the Canton Housing Authority, but I still feel like, you know, we don't necessarily need to be in the business of loaning money. I would rather use that money for immediate needs this year, and, and that's, that's really all I have. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Roach.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Dillon?
So when Dominion first brought their project to us, two-hundred-and-fifty-one senior affordable housing units, myself and a lot of folks in this room and in the city were super excited about it. It was very unfortunate it didn't work out with DCA because of their points scoring. This five hundred thousand dollar loan ask is one dollar above, no points being awarded to TBG. If they had asked for a four-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollar, nine, four-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollar loan, and we awarded it to them, they wouldn't get any points going from DCA. The five hundred thousand is the minimum threshold to get any points. It's an extremely competitive process with multiple municipalities around the state competing for very few dollars. So I, I fully support the, the project. The applicant has proven their worth and their value in the Lytec community particularly, and I just think it's a great investment for the city, and it, it is in line with the treasury guidance of the use of these funds. So I, I just, with respect, Mr. Roach, I, I totally support the, the loan and hope we can move forward as a council to extend this loan to the Housing Authority in support of TBG.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Johnson?
I've been on the fence a little bit about this one, and just like Mr. Roach, I struggle with the loan portion of this. And to be honest with you, kind of had my mind made up before I came here what that was, what that answer was going to be. But hearing from Ms. Gail, talking to Mr. Rice prior to the meeting and hearing that there are twenty, looks like twenty-nine applicants waiting on the one-bedroom, twenty-two applicants waiting on the two-bedrooms, and per the Housing Authority, the number I just heard was a hundred and ninety-eight applicants on the waiting list. So armed with that information, I will support this project. But just to be transparent, if these were not ARPA funds, if this were coming from the city, I would not be in support of that, but I will support this project.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate that. Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and I don't know who's going to answer it, but I have questions about the money. How much ARPA money did the city of Canton receive?
I have it. The city received eleven-point-four million dollars in ARPA money.
And how much of that eleven-point-four million has been used already?
So after we received it, there was a change in the rules for- So, after we received it, there was a change in the rules for ARPA, and they basically allowed local governments to claim a portion of those ARPA funds immediately as lost revenue during the pandemic. And it was based on a sliding scale, based on what your budget was and population. So, of the eleven point four million, we were able to claim ten million dollars off the top. So, those were placed in the general fund. We spent a hundred and forty thousand dollars on premium pay for essential workers. If you recall during COVID, we had some additional pay for law enforcement.
I do remember.
Forty thousand, six hundred dollars in vaccination incentives for staff, thirty thousand dollars in small businesses, assistance programs through the Chamber of Commerce, and then we have some administrative fees. We currently have one million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars that have to be obligated by December thirty-first.
Is that all we have left, one million?
All we have to have obligated by that day.
Okay. So, is that ten million still in our general fund?
The general fund, and it can go towards anything that the city does.
Has the city, does the city have a list of possible uses for that ten million?
Sure. Some of it goes to parks and recreation, some of it goes to transportation, some of it's gone to master planning. Pretty much anything the council approves as part of the general fund of the budget, it goes towards that.
Okay. What are ARPA funds? And where does that ARPA money come from?
Sure. So, in 2021, the federal government created the American Rescue Plan Act, and there was a formula that was put together based upon the populations of communities. The funding was sent from the federal government to the state government. The state government then did, I can't remember, did we get three tranches of funds? Two tranches of funds as they came in from the federal government through the governor's office of planning and budget at the state level. But those are federal funds. So, they're funds that are brought up by taxpayers across the country.
Across the country, okay. And, excuse me. They're only asking for five hundred thousand dollars, which is a lot of money. I don't mean only, it is a lot of money. But that is money that we have to have earmarked, part of the money we have to have earmarked for a use. And it is an acceptable use or approved use for affordable housing?
That is correct.
Am I correct? Okay. I think this is a very good use of our ARPA money. And I like that it's a loan and that it will get paid back. And when it's paid back, does that money go back into ARPA, or what do we do with it?
So, under the memorandum of understanding, those payments would come back to the Housing Authority, and then the Housing Authority would remit those to the city. When they come back to the city, they would come back as general fund, and they could be used for any expenses that council seeks to earmark. Council could also decide to leave those funds with the Housing Authority.
I possibly may not be here when those funds come back, but I would love to see those go, stay within housing for affordable and low-income. That's just my wish, in case I'm not here to tell you that.
Mr. Allen?
Okay. I wanted to emphasize something that you had said, Mr. Mayor, that this, and as Mr. Tillman was alluding to, is also, this is simply to help them get extra points trying to get the tax credits. If it's not that they have to have the money to do the project from us, this is simply a tool to help them get the tax credits to make the housing affordable for our seniors. And if they do not get the tax credit, it's my understanding that they wouldn't need the loan, and then it would go back to whatever use we found for it.
That's correct.
If I was understanding that correctly.
Correct. Thank you, Ms. Joln. And I appreciate everyone's perspective on this. It is, due to the circumstances, it is, you know, a lot to consider. I agree with other comments that, under typical circumstances, I would not be in favor of the city making loans to developers, you know, from the general fund, which, I have to say, that has been done in the past on other residential projects, such as the golf course in Laurel Canyon, when the city stepped in to save that project. So, we have done it, you know, with other developers. Again, I'm not a huge fan of that practice sometimes, you know. Needs require some immediate action. But this, I understand, you know, the questions about that. But, I mean, the fact is that it's, we do have these funds that have to be earmarked. And the fact is, if the project is not, loses, you know, support from the state from one point, you know, then we lose, at least in Phase One, ninety-six potential units for seniors who need formal housing in our city today. So, I would argue that it is an immediate need. And this, these funds and this loan through the Housing Authority, that the money that the city will give back, only if the project is approved, will come back to the city and our residents to be used for, rather, and I agree with Ms. McGrew, I'd like to see it being used for other housing needs. But, in case I'm not here too, which is highly probable, so. But anyway, I appreciate everyone's perspective on it. I know that we all support our roadmap priorities that came from our citizens, that we need more attainable housing, especially for our seniors. And again, the housing study that showed there's a huge lack, and the statistics and data support that. So, this is a solution, you know, if this solution doesn't happen. Again, these funds are going to get awarded to other tax credit products, projects in the state. I'd rather see those funds get approved and the project get approved for our citizens, because our goal to look out for our citizens and our city. And this is one way we can possibly make that happen. So, I'm totally in favor of the project and the loan agreement with Canton Housing Authority. So, yeah, questions or comments? I appreciate, again, everyone's patience on this. As we work through this issue, there's a lot of information to consider and understand, but I know everyone's certainly hearts in the right place, so.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no other questions, I would like to make a motion.
Okay. Still?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Canton Housing Authority in regard to the requested loan for the TBG residential project and their low-income housing tax credit application.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
All members voted for the motion except for Councilman Roach. So, the motion carries. Thank you. We'll move into new business now. And beginning with item A, discussion and possible action on Axon body worn and in-vehicle cameras with cloud-based storage. Chief Farrell? I think it's your first formal presentation to council. We look forward to it.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Good evening. I appreciate you taking the time to hear the proposal. Paperwork out here. Our current system is a watch-guard system, our body worn cameras and our cameras inside of our cars. And the current system is facing some frequent challenges, some challenges. The system is antiquated. It's not being supported any longer with their new software updates. So, it's been inefficient in sharing evidence with other agencies, such as the District Attorney's Office, the Solicitor's Office, or courts. Our proposed solution to resolve this problem is, I'm working with a company called Axon. They offer a reliable hardware, a streamlined evidence management migration. And one of the features that I really believe is very important for that system is the Axon camera system actually has a device on it that when you draw your taser or your sidearm, it automatically turns your camera on. If for some reason it wasn't on, it will automatically activate the camera. Additionally, if there are multiple officers on the scene, if their cameras aren't on, the system will pick up those additional officers and activate their cameras also, which can also give us better vantage points of, in the critical instance, give us an idea of where things happen from different vantage points. So, that is extremely important to me to see that. So, I really like that. Another great thing about it is it's a cloud-based storage system. It enables a seamless data transfer, so we're not having to burn disk and transfer them over to the courts. They can log into the site and actually review the body camera footage without us having to manually do it ourselves, which our current system watch-guard is not doing. So, it's reducing a big burden on the property and evidence room. And furthermore, the Axon has a flexible platform which allows for further enhancement to evolving needs we may have. The total cost of the project over a five-year period is one million, thirty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars. And it'll be distributed over five years as a capital lease at about two hundred thousand dollars per year. And we're asking for council's consideration in approving this contract with Axon. And I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chief Farrell. Appreciate that. And our cover sheet says that this is budgeted in this budget period. And those funds, I assume they're coming from the general fund, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
You know, the cameras, unfortunately, it's day and age, are a necessary tool for not only protect our police department, but also our citizens. And I think you mentioned it's a safeguard, and it's there. And we know there have been some shortcomings with our current cameras. And I appreciate you bringing this forward and all the due diligence going in to looking at this new system. We're going to have it. Of course, we want to have the best cameras possible, so that they do their job, you know, every time. So, I appreciate that. Any questions for the chief? Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Chief, what will be the fate of the old cameras should we approve this? Will they go to the auction?
Possibly. I don't know what we'll end up doing with them. They're really obsolete cameras, and I don't think they're going to have any value at all to any other department. They're constantly needing repair, updates, upgrades that watch-guard is no longer supplying. So, I don't think they're going to have any value to any other police department.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, chief. Appreciate your presentation.
Yes, sir.
As a five-year, I understand it's a five-year lease. And over that period, can you talk a little bit about what that includes in terms of potential software upgrades, software maintenance, anything that might be included in the lease?
Yes, of course. They, it comes with a full warranty guarantee. If the camera goes down, they'll ship us another camera right away. And I believe this contract allows for a few cameras to be on site. There are spare cameras should one go down. It's a fully five-year, one-hundred percent. If something upgrades for our software, upgrades for the cameras, anything that goes on with the cameras for that five-year period is covered by the contract. So, one goes down, the officer can get another one, we'll ship it back. They will repair or replace it and send it right back to us.
So, they have a supply on, at PD to replace that one and then send the bad one back to be repaired?
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Chief, thank you for that presentation. It sounds like this is a much-needed upgrade. I guess my question would be, has there been any discussion with other departments or anyone else that you're currently using this system?
Yes. I can speak really to that, from my past, the police department I was with, with Marietta. We didn't have this system, and we really wished we had purchased this at the time. But Cobb County PD uses Axon. There are multiple agencies. This is the state-of-the-art, top-of-the-line system. And the great thing is, it's so shareable with different departments, different agencies, that the cloud-based system is really top of the line. And one thing that's important, too, is the speed of the cameras. So, if you have an officer-involved shooting or some type of high crisis incident, when you start to slow video down to watch it, you know, frame by frame, when things happen very quickly, Axon has the most state-of-the-art system for us to be able to do that. And those are things that are very important should we have a critical incident. And they provide that best quality for that particular reason.
Okay. And last question, you did mention about the systems having the ability to turn on the cameras. Do they have the ability, or would, do they have the ability to turn them off? Or would there be a need?
I don't think they'd be able to turn them off. I think the key is it turns them on. So, I'd much rather have them on than for it to turn them off automatically. But the key thing is with the tasers, with the firearms, activating the cameras, multiple cameras at one time can come on at the same time to catch the scene, like I said, from different angles. I don't know that it will turn them off. The officers can manually turn them off, but I don't think the system will just automatically do that.
And chief mentioned the total cost is a little over a million dollars over five years. So, does that equate to around two hundred thousand a year?
Yes, sir. That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, can I, Mr. Peppers and Mr. Ingram? I know that the fines for speeding in school zones are earmarked specifically for public safety expenditure. Approximately how much revenues per year? Would more than cover cameras, correct?
It's about a million dollars.
Yeah. So, I think, you know, that certainly is a good return on investment for those funds, so.
And if I could just tie this into something that was mentioned earlier. If you recall back to our audit presentation, this will be one of those capital leases that falls under that GASB rule. And also will include a SABIDA, which is the subscription-based information technology agreement. I wanted to throw that out there. Because I didn't know that I would ever use.
GASB and SABIDA, so. You read those statistics, Ms. Forrest, we were talking about, didn't you? Great. Mr. Allen?
You mentioned that Cobb County uses this system. Do any of our other neighboring agencies use this same system?
Just one second. Captain Tucker, this Cherokee County SO.
Cherokee County uses it also.
And would our system interface with them if we were on the same scene?
It can, but it's the information sharing.
Okay. I was just curious.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
I would like to make a motion to approve the Axon body worn and in-vehicle cameras with cloud-based storage.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I appreciate that very much. And I hope it's not inappropriate, but I would like to commend Captain Tucker and thank him for the hard work he put into making this contract come to fruition. He did a lot of groundwork on it, and he's been a very, very good job on this. I just wanted to be on the record that he, what he did to make this happen. So, thank y'all for supporting it and supporting our police department.
Awesome. And thank you, Captain Tucker, for your great work, as always, so. And chief, I believe we're going to have the pleasure of hearing from you again. On the second item, discussion and possible action on a memorandum of understanding with the Cherokee County Sheriff for participation in the multi-agency special weapons and tactics team, otherwise known as SWAT.
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor, council. I appreciate this. This is a lot less expensive than the previous proposal. I assure you of that.
If you like that, you're getting better every day there.
I hope I'll be back up here for any more money anytime soon. I met with Sheriff Reynolds right after I took, was sworn in to the office. We had lunch together, and he approached me about, and a member of the multi-jurisdictional SWAT team said we don't have a member from Canton PD on the team. We have a negotiator on the team, but that we don't have anyone that's a tactical operator. He asked me would I be inclined to do that. When I was at Marietta, we had a full SWAT team in Marietta. It was our own team, a twenty-man team. They were a valuable resource to our department. When a critical incident happened, those SWAT team members, if they were on duty, they could organize the patrol officers, because they have specialized training, and really de-escalate things relatively quickly because of the things they know and learn. So, when the sheriff asked me about that, I thought it would be a great idea for us to add a member to the team. I really want to walk before I run and not add too many. So, we're inclined to try to add one member to the team, to the SWAT team. The trials are scheduled for May the ninth. It's a pretty in-depth trial, it's a twenty-four-hour trial period. So, they go through a lot of work to try to get on the team. So, I'm asking the mayor and council to... get on the team. So I'm asking the Mayor and Council to please consider approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Cherokee County Sheriff's Office and the City of Canton Police Department.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for the chief on this item?
Well, is there any cost associated to the city? Or is it just your providing personnel?
There is. There's an equipment cost to the city, and we have that in our budget to cover. Most of the equipment that they're going to need, we already have. There'll be some heavy armor, some rifle-grade armor, some night vision, holistic helmets, communication pieces that the team will need. So the total cost to fully implement a team is about fourteen thousand dollars.
And of course, the SWAT team and those resources would be applied for our citizens' residents in our city in case we ever needed those services, correct? Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, no other questions?
Yes, Ms. Roach.
I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Cherokee County Sheriff's for participation in the multi-agency special weapons and tactics team.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All of the members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted in the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
To you, chief. Good start.
I would mention, the chief mentioned that we have someone that's on the negotiations team that's actually an officer.
Awesome.
That he represents us on that team.
Appreciate your work there.
Thank you.
Item C, discussion of professional services by TSW for South Canton Park. Mr. Hooper, welcome.
Good evening. This is just the professional service agreement with TSW to continue the design of the South Canton Park project. It includes project management, design development, construction drawings, permitting the project, bidding the project, and construction administration. Total cost is three hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. That's part of the whole overall seven million, you know, for the total park project also.
Thank you, Ms. Hooper. Of course, we approved that concept for the amazing new South Canton Park and Dog Park. We look forward to getting that project started. Again, that park is being funded by SPOSS and impact fees, correct?
Yes.
Just to verify that again?
And state grants.
And state grants, yes. I think over two million in state grants.
Two million.
Two-point-two million. So, and this is all to get the design and getting everything in motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Hooper, Ms. McGrew?
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Do you have a ballpark idea of when we might be receiving this design?
I do not. I mean, I would imagine this is probably several months out from actually bidding, just because they have to go through the design, turn the concept into actual drawings and design. So I would expect a few more months for that.
Before we see the concept?
Before we see the actual design completed. Yeah.
Thank you.
Completed and timed to bid. So we've kind of saw the general concept, which looks great, but certainly looks complicated. So. Any other questions? If not, again, we're discussing that. We're not asking for approval tonight.
Approve next, two weeks.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Ms. Hooper.
Very much.
Soon we will consider that at our next meeting. Item D, again, just discussion only, discussion of public safety building roofing project, infrastructure and facilities maintenance manager, facility management, Brandon Poole. Thank you, Brandon. Welcome.
Mayor and Council, this is for the public safety building roof project. We received four bids on April seventeenth for the RFP that we issued. We were asking for standing seam metal with a shingle option. And then the city staff recommends the metal option over the shingle. The total cost is two hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars.
Okay. Again, you have seen the details of this project are in your packet. Are any questions for Mr. Poole?
How big is the roof? I believe it's just over six thousand square, I believe.
Six thousand squares?
And all companies provided the same warranty besides this company, their workmanship warranty was two years instead of one.
Okay, great. And is this something you'll be bringing us back in contract for approval at the next meeting? Any other questions? Thanks, sir. Appreciate the information. Item E, discussion of Canton Housing Team recommendations that the city create a Canton Community Land Trust. Mr. Patton, welcome back.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council members. Canton Housing Team has heard presentations from staff as well as the city attorney in regards to the possibilities. It was education for the housing team in regards to community land trusts. They have been around for a while, if you will. I did provide a good bit of background information for the council members within the package. I also sent out another email to all council members earlier today that talks about the steps to creating a land trust, if you will. Basically, land trust is a nonprofit that is created, which acquires, owns, or stewards land. It's used for most of the land trust that are created. Affordable housing is the primary use for land trust. A land trust would be another option in the toolbox for the city of Canton to utilize as it tries to move forward to provide additional attainable housing, if you will. They're set up such that, similar to the cottages area around Lake Alatuna, in which the land is owned by the land trust. And there's long-term lease that's set up for the folks that were to build on the land trust property. You set up documentation such that the person knows on the front end that they're not going to be able to realize all of the price increase, if you will, of the development. I did provide a handout from the Atlanta Land Trust. It sort of explains how it operates with homeowners. It's a way to maintain affordable housing for multiple generations. Hopefully, the folks, if city council were to approve a land trust, folks that would buy, would acquire wealth and potentially sell and move out of the community, if you will, but because of limitations that are in place. And they know on the front end before purchasing or building that those limitations are there, that they realize money that they've put into the house plus part of that appreciated value, but major portion would stay with the land trust to perpetuate affordable housing, if you will, in the community, that sort of thing. The Atlanta Land Trust, just to give you an example, they have currently forty-two units in their land trust. They have one hundred and eighty-one units under development. They have one hundred future units that are in the pipeline. They also have an additional three town home projects for one hundred and eighteen units, with ninety of those units permanently affordable. The Athens Land Trust, which is another that was in the list of land trusts that I've provided to you, they have sixty-four families through their land trust that have become first-time home buyers. They have ten families that are in rent-affordable apartments within the city. And they've got three hundred and seventy low-income individuals, residents of some apartments that are part of the land trust program. Moab Community Land Trust in Utah, they have one project, Arroyo Crossing. It is designed for three hundred units. Infrastructure is in place to serve two hundred and forty-eight units. Twenty-five units are currently occupied, nineteen are under construction. They have two multifamily projects that are starting up this year, a thirty-two-unit multifamily project and a twenty-four-unit multifamily project. With the land, if you will, being removed out of the equation, construction cost, and talking with builders and developers, the land cost is approximately twenty, twenty-five percent of the cost of housing. So if you move that out of the equation, you can see where the community land trust is better suited to provide affordable housing, if you will. I know that's a quick overview, but there's a good bit of information. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. Dyer, you had some comments?
I do. As we've talked about housing over the number of years, we would always hit the issue of how do we make sure it's affordable in the future? You can make the first buyer be affordable, but then, and so this is a great vehicle for solving that problem with the leases. The other advantage that I see is you can do it, single houses, single lots, or bigger development, as Mr. Patton was describing, a whole subdivision could be. So it's a pretty good vehicle for moving forward. One of the other attractive parts of it would be that people can donate land if they wanted to and put it into the land trust. So the governance of the land trust would be a board. You would figure out all these details, but it could include residents on that, Board of Directors of the land trust. So it seemed like a pretty good solution to a lot of the problems mentally that I kept running into or legally. And so I got real excited about it when Mr. Patton and I started talking about it.
Thank you.
I might add, Mr. Mayor and Council members, within the package, I did provide two properties that are owned by the city that city council might look at for consideration, for donation to the land trust if city council moves forward to create a land trust. One of those is some property that's on Ship Street that's adjacent to the Tenor Place project of the Canton Housing Authority. Think that would be a great location for some townhomes. It does have some topo with it. It drops off from Ship Street, which would be ideal for townhomes. The other parcel and there are other properties the city owns that potentially could be looked at besides other land donations, that sort of thing. But the other in the package is a seven-acre parcel up at the Bluffs that sits on the corner of Bluff Parkway and Fake Con Road. It is a uniquely shaped piece of property that I'm not sure would accommodate much in the way of a larger office or a technology-type development on that particular piece of property. And again, that's just for examples of some properties that I'm familiar with that if council decides to move forward, could be considered down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. We appreciate that information, your ongoing work, and especially the housing committee and looking for innovative solutions, you know, to housing issues in the city. I mean, I've said it all along, it's not one solution. It's got to be a variety of tools in our toolkit to address all the needs and address them in a very, you know, innovative way, also, and for future generations. I know in working with the canteens and the teen group I work with here in the city, and I talk to them about housing, you know, it's, I hear from them all the time, it's like, you know, I can't afford that. So I can't afford to come back to Canton. So it's certainly not just a current need, but certainly ongoing need. And I think, you know, looking at all of these tools is certainly worthwhile endeavor. Mr. Tolan?
Just one point to dovetail on Mr. Patton's comments. It's pretty widely known that the average sales price in Cherokee County now is over five hundred thousand, five hundred and six thousand dollars. He noted that the implementation of a land trust could shave about twenty-five percent off of the cost of homeownership. That would equate to one hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars off of that five hundred and six, making not quite affordable, but more affordable at three hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars for that five hundred and six thousand dollar home, if that home were in a land trust. So I think it's a great tool. Appreciate Mr. Dyer's comments, Mr. Patton's work on this. As you said, it's being done all over the country. My understanding, if you could clarify this, Mr. Patton, if we decided to move forward with a land trust, we wouldn't necessarily have to have one in the city. We'd have multiple land trusts around the city. Is that correct?
If that's the desire of the city council, you could set up multiple community land trusts in the different areas of the city, if that's the pleasure of the city council. Or you could create one land trust that would look at the city as a whole.
Okay. I'm looking forward to sharing additional information with the public as we consider this.
Okay, Ms. McGrew.
It's a great tool in the toolbox.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Patton. And in your information that you sent us in the packet, there are different types of land trusts. Is the staff recommending any one particular type? Or would we use all the types that you mentioned here?
Well, the land trust could be established for multiple purposes, if you will. You know, the Athens Land Trust is real big on fuel conservation and conservation easements, agricultural. They've protected over sixteen thousand acres of land over around Athens, Clark County through that land trust. They have a farmer's market that they operate. They have active agriculture ongoing with some of that. City of Albany, Georgia, believe it or not, was the first land trust created in the United States. And it was created to enhance and protect African-American agricultural purposes. It's still active down there today. This is a thing you're seeing everywhere. A lot of local governments won't necessarily have what is commonly called a community land trust. An example of Salt Lake City, they have a program, and they call it the Salt Lake City Shared Equity Program. But it's basically the same thing as community land trust with their shared equity. Salt Lake City is the property owner, and they set up the rules and regulations in regards to their shared equity program. It's very similar to the land trust. I provided, Mr. Dyer, several examples of articles and incorporation, bylaws, some of the documents needed to create the 501(c)(3) nonprofit, some of the letters and all associated with some of the other land trusts, and things that I've found and researched across the country.
Thank you. And as you recall, we have talked about land banks in the past.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you mind telling me the difference in a land bank and a land trust?
Well, the land trust actually owns or stewards the land. The land bank sort of acts almost like a real estate company in how they operate in regards to land and redevelopment and rehabbing houses and that sort of thing. I do know that the Atlanta Land Bank works extremely closely with the Atlanta Land Trust, as well as Invest Atlanta. All three of them work together. As a matter of fact, the president of the Atlanta Land Bank was the original president of the Atlanta Land Trust.
Thank you.
Probably the simplest way to think of it is the land bank would be a source of land for the land trust.
For what?
Would be a source of land for the land trust. So the land bank So the land bank may acquire it with the powers that a land bank would have and then transfer the property to the land trust.
Would the land trust purchase the property, or it would just be deeded over to them?
Just transfer, yeah. I mean, the, the land trust wouldn't work if they're having to pay for land. So you're, you're looking at donations of land either through government or through private organizations or money given to the land trust that then could be used to buy it.
Thank you.
I like the, you know, concept of public-private partnerships, working together for these solutions. Also like, really like the concept of having, you know, residents appointed to the land trust, so the residents are continuing to be kind of co-creators of the communities that we're building and great neighborhoods we're creating in the city. And I like the fact that we also could focus on single-family development and, and, you know, an additional tool to increase homeownership and interest in homeownership. I mean, the problem is not going away. I mean, we know our, our cost is top four hundred and fifty thousand dollars now, average cost, I heard today. City of Alpharetta, this was just announced today, their, their average cost of a home topped six hundred and fifty thousand dollars just recently. So it's, I mean, it's not going to go away, it's something we're going to continue to wrap up with.
FMLS for March in Cherokee County, median sales price was five hundred and six thousand, four hundred dollars. First time it's gone over five hundred thousand. And that was an increase from four hundred and sixty-two thousand from February.
I look forward to looking this further and again, appreciate the information, the work, the Housing Committee. Mr. Patton, I commend you on that. Again, all these tools I think are viable and deserve our due diligence. So any other comments or questions?
If any of the council members have any additional questions, reach out to me. I'll provide any answers that I can or find out the answers.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. We know where to find you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Item F, discussion on Task Order Six with Kekon Wood for Prominence Point Parkway Intersection Improvements at Publix Walgreens Driveway in the amount of ninety thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Ms. Watson?
So as we discussed at the retreat, Kekon Wood has completed a concept and I have asked that they present a proposal to do full design of a signal at the Prominence Point Parkway and Publix Walgreens Driveway. The total cost of the design will be ninety thousand dollars and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. I appreciate your work on this and certainly something that's important to our residents who live in the Prominence Point community. And we all know if you've been, ever tried to get out of that intersection, how dangerous it is. So any questions? This is just discussion tonight, or would you be bringing forth a contract to consider? Any questions for Ms. Watson?
One thing I would point out too is I didn't, I didn't realize it until today, but they actually show a short form agreement that is not the one that we need signed.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll remove it from the next agenda.
We appreciate that. And then item G, discussion on the Ward of Brown Industrial Booster Pump Station Project to Seoul Construction in the amount of two million, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
Thank you. So in March, we put this project out for bid and we received three contractor bids. The low bidder is Seoul Construction, who we have worked with before. Staff will be making a recommendation at the next meeting for approval of that contract. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Watson? Okay, yeah. Ms. McGrew?
We've worked with Seoul Construction before. I assume we were, you were happy with their work?
Yes, ma'am, we were very happy.
Do they have reviews from other municipalities?
That was not part of the bidding packages, but I definitely could ask them for references, although like I said, we have worked with them and we were very happy with their work. They did the Lowell Canyon Booster Station. I've been over with that, thank you.
Any other questions? Here in on, item H, discussion and possible action on concept for River Mill District Pedestrian Bridge.
Thank you. So, go ahead.
Ms. Watson, can you pull the mic closer to you, please?
Sorry, is that better? So also, as we discussed at the retreat, I have received concept alternatives for the River Mill District Bridge, Pedestrian Bridge. This is the bridge going from the mill over to the new trail down Old Ball Ground Sewer. After the retreat, I did request that they give us some other alternative materials. They did provide some additional information that is provided in the packets. After looking through all of the information, staff would recommend that we move forward with Alternative One, which is a concrete bridge that will avoid utilities, it will last a whole lot longer, and it also provides some slope stability on that slope over there at the city property. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And I believe as we discussed at the retreat and passed, Ms. Watson, with, again, looking at viable alternatives for a wooden bridge, which we've had experience with and pass it at a water river park and it's required number, you know, replacing some of that material on the decking of that. And then just the constant maintenance of that. I believe we discussed the wooden bridge would last somewhat around twenty-year timeframe and the concrete one you're proposing, my understanding is eighty or eighty-five years?
Yes, so wood bridges would have to be, the decking would have to be replaced every ten to twenty years and for concrete decking, it's seventy-five plus.
So again, it's, it's about double the cost, but certainly is the, the, I think we would actually save money in the long term with, with maintenance and replacement of that, that bridge, which is very far spanned, as you guys know, across there from the mill on Etowah. So we don't have final costs on this tonight. This is just basically asking for a concept approval to move forward with the concrete version and get final costs and estimates on that versus the other possible construction methods, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Ms. Watson?
One, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Tolan?
We talked about this briefly, Ms. Watson, prior to the meeting. We compared the concrete versus the wood and I think in the, deeper in the report, it talks about the metal that we have on the bridge that connects Heritage and Etowah River Parks. Can you talk for a second about why that was not seriously considered, or are there factors that made you lean more towards the concrete and not so much the metal?
So the cost and longevity of steel versus concrete is pretty much the same. One thing that I would say about the use of concrete over steel is that concrete is maintenance-free, non-slip and heat resistant. With metal decking, you're going to have maintenance at the connections, it's slicker when wet, retains heat, and then it's also very noisy. The, the one benefit of metal over concrete is that it is lighter, so faster construction time, but that's, that's really the, the main reason that staff recommends concrete over metal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great information. Ms. McGrew?
Would this concrete be poured concrete or pre-manufactured?
Poured concrete.
Any other questions? Ms. McGrew?
There's no other discussion, questions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Concept One for the concrete bridge in the amount of five million, fifty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
We don't need, yeah, we don't need a dollar amount.
This is just pointing them in the right direction to come and give us an actual cost.
That's just the estimate that they've provided.
Thank you, thank you for that correction. Yes, go with concrete.
So a motion to proceed with the concrete concept for further pricing. Is there a second?
Second.
A second, any further discussion? If not, all of they would say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Item I, discussion on slope repair for Old Ball Ground Sewer Project. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. So since we have a direction on the bridge, which will also includes a wall along that slope for some slope stability, staff would like direction on whether or not we would like to dress the slope now. The bridge itself will not include the entire entirety of the slope where we have the issues over on the city property across from the mill. So I have received some additional cost estimates on the cost to repair that slope or to get it back to where it's, I can't figure it out. Stabilized, that's what I'm looking for, to where it's stabilized. So with your approval, I would bring a contract to the next meeting for the lowest bidder on, on repairing that slope. Or if we, we could just continue to have it be as it, as it is until the bridge construction, which is probably a year and a half out. It's just, do we fix it now for them to tear it up later, or do we leave it as it is and then they repair it with the bridge contract?
I know we discussed this and I appreciate you getting, you know, looking into it further and looking at other contractors for this project. Would you have a particular recommendation? I mean, my initial thought is to, if it's an issue now, is to address it now, but...
I, I think so. It's, it's currently a eyesore and it's gonna, if we wait until the bridge is completed, it'll be another year and a half before we even see any work out there at all. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, and you'll be bringing the contract to us the next meeting to consider that? Okay. Any further questions? Okay. And then item J, discussion of award of Canton Creek Pedestrian Bridge and Sidewalk Improvement Project Design Services and Construction Management to Practical Design Partners in the amount of eight hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Thank you. So back in 2023, the city was awarded a two-point-two million dollar grant for the Canton Creek and Sidewalk Improvement Project. This was issued by the Office of Planning and Budget for Improving Neighborhood Outcomes and fortunately impacted communities. The city issued an RFP in January and we received three requests for proposals. We received them for review and consideration. We had an evaluation committee look through those proposals and we selected Practical Design Partners. Staff has met with PDP and negotiated costs and we received a proposal for scope and cost in the amount of eight hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred dollars. This does include construction and design. And I also would point out that the design is covered under the grant and we still expect the entire project to be under that two-point-two. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And again, this is for discussion only, you're bringing that back for our consideration. Again, it would be covered by the grant we've already received, so.
Correct.
Any questions for Ms. Watson? Thank you, Ms. Watson. So it's good to know we continue to build bridges instead of walls here in the city of Canton. So thank you for your great work and all the great information. So again, I want to thank, I think, I believe I did this at the last meeting, I can't recall, but acknowledge Ms. Watson for being recognized as one of the one hundred female engineers in the state of Georgia. So we're very proud of you and your great work and appreciate y'all in the sitting. Congratulations on the acknowledgements. Mr. Peppers?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. A few items to update you on. First of all, we have entered into a partnership with OnPoint, which is a group that does community-based surveying. This was budgeted for this particular year with our, with our routine budget. OnPoint basically puts together a community survey that's used to gauge, you know, the, the work of the city, how well citizens are satisfied with the city as a, as an organization. It deals with the things that they like about the city, the things they dislike about the city, ranking things that they like about the city, dislike about the city. It will start sometime next week and be open for about a three-week period. Their goal is to get about fifteen hundred responses to the survey. We had an opportunity, Mr. Ingram and I had an opportunity to first meet OnPoint, gosh, it's been probably two years ago, and see a couple of examples of the work that they've done across the country. And last year, we had an opportunity with Ms. Johnson to sit down and have a deeper conversation with them about how they gather that information and how communities use that. We have not done a comprehensive citizen survey before, so this is a really good opportunity for us now. The reason why we would like to do it in May and we're, and we're launching it, is it will also give us that feedback by the end of May that will help empower you as you put together the budget and things like that moving forward into the summer. So I did want to make you aware of that. The survey is going to be marketed through online, social media, website, newsletters, QR codes and things like that. It can be taken from a mobile device. Public Works is still doing some work on some storm damage cleanup. Just a little bit of information for you, we did a hundred and thirteen individual resident-initiated brush pile pickups, six hundred yard waste bags, and when the storms came through, we had roads that were blocked by the storms, including Shamley Lane, Muriel Street, Breeze Hill Court, Longview Street, Riverdale Circle and Whisper. They've been working very hard and I wanted to appreciate them for that hard work. We are currently working on getting in a new detection camera for the traffic signal at Ridge Road and Marietta Highway. We have a loop system in, in place that allows us to basically monitor traffic as it comes up to the light. The camera detection system will allow us to look further than that and help us with queuing that occurs at certain times of the day. What ends up happening is you end up with a backup on Marietta Highway because someone is trying to leave Berry Ridge and they hit the sensor and the way the light system works. So this will help with that process and it's on order right now. I did have a citizen reach out to me earlier this week with concerns about traffic in that area and I responded that that's a project that we're currently working on. Additionally, there was some conversation with Georgia Department of Transportation about the traffic signal at Knox Bridge Highway and River Green Avenue. I actually talked with one of the signal experts at GDOT earlier today. One of the issues that we're facing is the amount of traffic that's able to leave River Green and go straight through to Butterworth. And, and basically the way the light is set up, it's only allowing between five, six, seven cars at a time to get through that intersection. Part of the issue that GDOT's having, and they've asked us to look into some additional information about specific times of the day where it's seen more by residents of River Green, but one of the issues that GDOT's having is at peak times, if they're not cycling that light fast enough, they're creating backups on twenty further down the road back towards Lake. Because that's the heavier route of traffic, they're having to let as much of that go through as possible. As you all know, a lot of that will be improved when GDOT starts working on State Route Twenty West, but we also know that GDOT is not very fast at working on road projects. So I've asked them to, to, you know, give us a little bit of opportunity, have some conversation with residents and find out exactly what times of the day are worse so that maybe we can come up with some temporary solutions, but I did want to let you know about that. On Monday, Cherokee County Water and Sewerage Authority had their board meeting. Their staff presented their proposal to reduce the city of Canton's grandfathered allocation from six hundred and ninety-two thousand gallons per day to two hundred and seventy thousand gallons per day. Their board approved the recommendation without any public comment. The grandfathered allocation has most recently been used to give potential allocation, availability letters for economic development project inquiries that we receive through the Cherokee Office of Economic Development. So for example, state of Georgia works with large utilities like Southern Company George Power. They get interest from international groups that are looking to develop, you know, industry, smart industry, technology, office headquarters, projects like that. Those get funneled down to the county development authorities to help find sites. And one of the questions that always comes up with... And one of the questions that always comes up with a project like that is, based upon this project, we need 200,000 gallons a day of water to 50, 500, 1 million, whatever it is based upon the project. One of the things the city has always been able to do is say, hey, we've got an additional 500,000 gallons that are basically sitting over here that we can allocate at any time. Yeah, up to a half million gallons, we have availability. Now that that's been removed, I informed Ms. Martin at CoEd, we're not going to be able to do that anymore. It's going to be on a case-by-case basis and it may require some length in time for us to negotiate with our authority before we can respond to those availability letters. Probably the most alarming thing about the entire situation is the board met and there was no opportunity at their meeting. Mr. Ingram was at the meeting on behalf of the city. And in fact, I believe there were a couple of board members who were suggesting that they remove all grandfathered water from communities. As I mentioned before, my biggest concern is the fact that they've allocated roughly a million gallons of capacity to entities not in Cherokee County. So while we may not be able to say to the Office of Economic Development at the county that we have water availability, our friends in Pickens County, Jasper, Dawson County and Barto County may be able to say yes. So I just bring that to your attention. It's probably something we will continue to discuss at the staff level with them, continue to share our concerns, but I did want to update you on that. Tomorrow night is First Friday. That returns downtown. We have Rupert's Orchestra. I do encourage our wonderful residents that like to attend, please do not sit at 7:00 a.m. on Friday morning. Give Public Works the opportunity to get out there, make sure everything's clean, get everything set up. Chairs that are placed on sidewalks will be taken up because we have to maintain the ability and safety of the residents and visitors that are there with foot traffic and being able to get around freely in that park. But we do expect a big crowd tomorrow night and it looks like it'll be a fun activity. The last thing I would like to mention tonight is special congratulations, and she doesn't know I'm going to do this, but Ms. Norton Greenback here is receiving her degree from Kennesaw State University this weekend. And we are very, we are very excited about that for her and want that for her. And we appreciate her continuing her education. So congratulations to you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Any questions for Mr. Peppers? I want to say I'm sure I share counsel sentiment of disappointment in the Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authorities' decision. And I would respectfully ask them to reconsider that. And hopefully we can continue to work with them and maintain the positive partnership we've had since we helped them start their own activities there. Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Nothing for me, except I just wanted to reiterate and thank our entire team for their hard work on last week's events in celebration of Georgia Cities Week. It was just an amazing week. I was running around like the guy with six prom dates and then trying to get all of these events. I think I made all the major ones. There were things going on behind the scenes too. But, you know, from Garden in the Park to the opening, grand reopening of Harmon Park and the ribbon kicking for the new soccer pitch field with Atlanta United, which is a great night, wonderful night, our team job there. The jersey launch for the second season for the Canton's Georgia Impacts VSL Soccer Team, semi-pro professional women's soccer team, who's been announced that they're going fully professional next year. So we'll have a fully professional women's soccer team in the city of Canton, proudly wearing our jerseys. And then the Etowah Film Festival over the weekend, which is a wonderful celebration of, of local, regional and international films, including on Sunday afternoon, there were probably eight or nine local Canton filmmakers debuting their films, which was really wonderful and interesting and a further sign of the, our growing creative economy, which is great to see here in the city. So it's also a time to thank our, you know, our staff, but also our citizen volunteers who make all these activities possible as well. And volunteers, I think Nikki Farley may be, be sitting back there, but she's, to me, she's the epitome of a citizen volunteer. And we want to thank all of our volunteers on our boards and commissions and people who aren't on boards and commissions that just show up at, at like events such as like First Friday tomorrow night to, to make sure that we're going to have a great night and a wonderful celebration in the coolest small town in America. So thank you all and of course, thank to my colleagues here on council for your ongoing work to, to make all these things possible and your, your great work and always doing the right thing and doing it with civility and integrity. And I, I appreciate that. So with that being said, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.